First on the agenda is the proclamation recognizing the Jersey Devil Festival of April 6th and 7th, 2018.
Got it. Thank you.
You're welcome.
You gonna come up?
I don't know if that would take a picture.
Yes.
Do we have to move for this?
Oh, you'll have your expectations.
I don't think so. We'll bump into things if we try to go over there. We'll bump into things if we try to go over there. I can crawl.
Okay. Esberry Park is universally acknowledged as a place of supernaturally talented artists, artisans, craftsmen, musicians, and tall-tale-tellers. And whereas the Jersey Devil is the first and oldest cryptid or monster in the United States of America, having been reported by the...
Lenape.
Lenape, and commoners alike. And whereas sharing our cultural legends and myths help build our community and bind us to each other through generations. And whereas the Jersey Devil, though mysterious, has never been known to cause more than good scare. And whereas the Jersey Devil Festival is a day of celebrating heritage and history, folklore, and good yarn while introducing people to our fair city, its business, and its parks. And the Jersey Devil is celebrated in the Jersey Devil Festival at Esberry Park, a free event upon... A free event open to any and all who choose to participate in and at the level they choose, including lectures, walking tours, art contests, and many other events. Esberry Park is a city that values community and possesses devilish spirits of good old-fashioned fun. The Jersey Devil Festival invites people to discover folklore and history while also showcasing the art, restaurant, business community of Esberry Park. The Jersey Devil and the Jersey Devil Festival share Esberry Park's indomitable spirit and drive to survive, grow, and build. Therefore, be it resolved that John Moore, Mayor of Esberry Park, do hereby proclaim the Jersey Devil as the official cryptid of Esberry Park and encourage residents to learn more about the folklore and history of the uniquely New Jersey creature. And we should do... Just do a picture with everybody. One picture with everybody. And then we're good. There we go! There we go!
My wife's been here a lot. She said, "What happens at your meeting? Lieutenant, we have proclamation for the Jersey Devil." She said, "What the fuck is that?"
Thanks so much. Thank you. Here you guys.
Don't leave yet. This is... I gotta tell the true story.
Okay.
Well, I was like a young'un.
Oh, that's awesome.
Growing up, 11, 12 years old, the big kids took me to a parade for a ride. It didn't fall, because back then, the folk were going to, like, New York City or so far. Essex Road was where the Jersey Devil was. And they left us there, made us walk home.
And they had all been back to Esberry Park. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
All right, next on the agenda is city manager's report on issues raised at prior council meetings.
None at this time, Madam Clerk.
Then we'll move to special events. Lysia?
Good evening, Mary Council. This evening, there are three applications before you. The first one is from the quality of life committee to do a recycling event in conjunction with the Earth Day Fair on April 21st. Second is the citywide yard sale to benefit Rescue Ridge on June 9th. And third is Bourbon Bacon &amp; Blues to be held in Kennedy Park, sponsored by Crossing Orange on April 22nd. Any questions?
Thank you.
Next, we'll move on to presentations. The first one is a presentation of Jersey Shore Medical Center.
Good evening. My name is Tim Foley. I'm the Vice President for Physician Business Development at Jersey Shore University Medical Center. I'd like to thank the Council for your time this evening to present to you what we call our Hope Tower Project. Just a little bit about Jersey Shore. It's a 614-bed facility. We have a medical staff of 1,200... I'm sorry. 1,200 physicians and over 3,700 team members, employees who work there. We are the region's only Level 2 trauma center, where the region's leading cardiac surgery provider, and home to the K. Hovindian Children's Hospital, which was the first children's hospital in Monmouth in Ocean Counties. We have a 24/7 pediatric emergency department, and we are ranked by U.S. News and World Report as number four in New Jersey and number 11 in the New York metro area. And more recently, we're very pleased to announce that we recently launched the Hackensack Meridian School of Medicine at Seton Hall University in Nutley. And we just received in the past week over 1,400 applications from students, prospective students, who will start this summer at the medical school. So, thank you for that time to do that little introduction. And now, I'm here to talk about what we call our Hope Tower Project. Hope, and the Hope Tower stands for a Healing Outpatient Experience. And it's the building that you see there. There is an aerial view as well as an artist rendition of the building. It's designed for patient-centered care, and it's going to meet our growing healthcare needs of the community and allow patients to access excellent care close to home. It's a $265 million investment by Hackensack Meridian Health. The tower is just under 300,000 square feet and 10 stories. We broke ground in November of 2015. The parking garage, which is, so you can see in the aerial view, located right behind the tower, is opened in January of 2017. And we expect the tower to open in the spring... This spring, in a phased approach. So, we're going to be opening it floor by floor. And we view this building as the cornerstone of our vision and commitment to providing care for the residents and the community. Just a couple of quick features about this 10-story building. One of the primary focuses and features of the building is on the first two floors is our new cancer center. It will feature 33 infusion therapy chairs, and that's the second to the last drawing there is, the rendition of inside, the infusion suite. So, it's a... Right now, we have a 12-chair infusion suite on the hospital campus. This is 33 chairs. It's very spacious, a lot of lights, a lot of windows for cancer patients. We also have... We'll be installing in our cancer center two, what are called True Beam Liner Accelerators for those receiving radiation therapy for their cancer. These are the latest liner accelerators for that type of cancer treatment. There will also be a women's center, cardio-oncology services, nurse navigators, and other support for patients with cancer. Also, on the first two stories will be our outpatient imaging services. We're going to move our radiology services out of its current location and into this... Into the two floors of this building, just to make it convenient for patients. We'll also have pre-registration and lab services. And then, on the remaining floors moving up, each of our clinical departments will have its own floor, internal medicine, psychiatry, OB-GYN surgery, so on and so forth. And then, on the top two floors is dedicated to academics and research. On the last picture there is the new teaching theater auditorium on the top floor. There's a ton of teaching happening at Jersey Shore, both medical students, medical residents, nurses, allied health profession... Professionals, lab professionals. We have medical explorers from local high schools. And we just need more space for all that teaching, so this is a state-of-the-art teaching facility. And then, on the ninth floor is a simulation center that we'll use also for that teaching. There is a replica OR, patient care room, exam room. So, it's a great place for caregivers to simulate how they're providing care to patients and how to coordinate their care amongst the different specialties. And then, we're also relocating our research center there as well, so lots of clinical trials and research is going on in the building. So, I appreciate your time, and just wanted to introduce the building that's opening up this spring and just highlight some of the features. And on behalf of all the team members and physicians at Jersey Shore, thank you for your support and the opportunity to show this to you.
We thank you, and if possible, when you open up, if you could arrange a tour for us, that would be great.
Oh, we would love to do that. Thank you.
Yeah, and congratulations on opening up the medical school.
Thank you.
I think, what, the first one in 50 years to open in Jersey?
I believe so, yes.
Right, and I saw the applications are through the roof, and it's going to be very tough to get in, and some great people... I know people applying, and their credentials are fantastic, so it's going to be tough to select, so good luck on that one.
It's very exciting. We definitely need more physicians in this area.
Yes, but again, we thank you for everything. I mean, I remember when it was Fictin Hospital. So, I still call it Fictin at the time, because I can't remember whether it's got somebody at University and everything, but you do a great job. I think you're the largest employer in the area, and I know a lot of Esberry Park residents work for you, so again, thank you very much for all you do. Could you leave a business card before you leave?
Sure.
Okay. And yeah, when you're open in the spring, I would love to take a tour.
Okay, certainly.
Thank you. Thank you, and anything you need from us, please.
Thank you very much. Again, really appreciate your support.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Great job.
And we'll next move on to our next presentation by Sacman Enterprises regarding requested amendments to the Central Business District Redevelopment Plan for 711 Madison Avenue and 574 Cookman Avenue.
So did I. So did I. And I was thinking, what?
Good evening. My name is Andrew Carras from the firm Fox, Rorschach, and we're here for Sacman Enterprises. We have a few matters we're here on tonight. I'll try to go through as quickly as I can. Two projects that we are going to... We're planning on, first one is 574 Cookman Avenue, that's the Seacoast Realty Building. The other one is 711, 725 Madison Avenue. We're looking for additional plan amendments to add height to these two facilities, two buildings. And 574, we're looking to go up to 70 feet. 711 Madison, we're looking to go up to 50 feet. We have our... One of the architects of record on this project, Obi Agudosi, here to testify tonight. He's just going to provide a background. He's one of the architects on the design of the buildings. Just going to provide a background in terms of the building, what we're looking to do, and why the additional height is going to be required.
Thank you very much. My name is Obi Agudosi. I'm the architect for the 574 Cookman. It's a collaboration between OCA and Sharp, which is another architectural company. In order to do this project, Sacman went and interviewed a lot of architects to try to see, you know, for them to come up with their vision, you know, to put the building on top of an existing building. So, based on that exercise, they selected Sharp and OCA to do the architects of this project. So, basically, we are looking at a building on the first floor, which is existing, it's an existing bank building, actually. From what I heard, it's gone through several uses, so... And the challenge is to try to put something on top of a building such as that. So, Sharp did some studies, working with us, of course, and we came up with this concept of trying to put the building on top of it, but make it light. So, that building, the addition that we put on top of it will be very light, so that it doesn't impose on the existing building there. So, on the first floor, we'll be retail mostly. Because the building is so tall, it's almost a terrific, you know, space and volume. So, we are planning to put a mezzanine on the second, you know, on the... Up and towards the back of the... Be a mezzanine. So, you have a... I think, I believe, right now, there's a second restaurant outfit that would fill that space. And the plan then is to, on top of that, you know, build some units. We are planning to do six units per floor, so a total of 18 units. Mostly one bedrooms and studios, and two bedrooms on that level, three of them. We believe that this is a very good use of, you know, that space over the existing building, and that this particular design interests will be iconic and will reflect the direction that Esberry is going. So, these are the studies of some of what we have.
To continue with that, obviously, the gorge really would be building that's on the corner, Seacoast Realty, in the condition that it's in, horrendous condition that it had been. Sacman Enterprises looking to be begun the restoration of that building, bring it back to its former form. Needless to say, it's an expensive, very expensive endeavor to restore that building. The residential units within the neighborhood, that's a mixed-use building, also helps to offset the cost of the... The annual cost of restoring the beautiful historic building underneath. The 70 feet will match out across the street. We already are up on 70 feet on the Steinbeck Building across the street, so it's obviously that 70 feet here will be added placement in the neighborhood. See, we do have, in a sense, a sister corner that has a building that reaches to that height. Also seeing what we have within the CBD area. It fits within that, provides beautiful visual entrance into the downtown area, that corner of Asbury, which really needs it at this point, and that's going to happen.
Refresh my memory, what's it zoned for now?
That is the CBD... It's a CBD zone.
Right.
It's permitted in mixed-use building.
No, 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 height-wise.
Height-wise, 45 feet, I'm sorry. So, that is number one. When we launch the 711. Hey, I'm sorry, any other questions?
Are those... Yeah, yeah, yeah. Are those blinds? I'm a little confused by the design. Is that... What are those things? Are those, like, movable doors?
No, those are just a metal system that we put in... A louver system in front, you know, of the building itself, just to try to create, you know, verticality to the look of the building. But if you're in this space, you'd be able to, you know, look out. So, this provides, you know, shading, depending on where the stones is.
And provides visual interest to the building. Now, the design on top is to stay from the design on the bottom, right, correct?
Yes.
Is there a reason for that when you take a historic building and building it on top? Why would this thing which we created?
It's... Because there's a challenge of trying not to compete, or is there already? Because we tried, you know, the studies that we did, there's about seven different design iterations of this. We found that, you know, trying to separate the new from the old, by making the one on top a little wider, gives a sense of scale and size to what is there, right? So, that's why the most of it is what it was.
And you don't want to replicate a historical building, which you simply can't do that, right? And I noticed that you, in a sense, have a curtain that comes down on the right side to combine those two buildings, create a singular...
Yeah, the idea is to hide that end with what is there on top. Instead of just having the leotard kick effect, where if this is all solid, then you have the illusion of just having something pop on top of the other. But trying to break it down with scale, that's why we made that entrance for the entrance.
I'll be... Go ahead. What's going on on the roof there? I see greenery up on the roof in this rendering that we have?
Yes, oh, those are just shadow lines. There's no...
All right. Well, in this one, there's some greenery up on the roof.
There's no intention to have access to that roof.
Okay.
The exterior louvers, do they move?
No, they are fixed.
Okay.
And of the 18 units, are any deemed to be affordable?
We have got into that. That certainly can be worked at through redevelopment, in terms of paying for the units, correct?
And is there parking for these units?
No. We're going to get into the 711 building, the 711, which the proposal has 181 spaces, so it has additional capacity in there. So, why don't we get into that next project? That's where all the parking is.
Kevin, do you have anything to say about this fire's concern? Would that melt quickly?
Hey, Michael, can you email me these units? Because I'm never going to keep them.
Send them to me.
And how many units are there in this particular project?
On 574, 18, which would require 28.
18 units, okay.
Have you seen an elevator? Yes. We have an elevator on two sets of stairs. So, 711 is a building that's directly behind 700 Banks Avenue, which is a building that's currently under construction. And OCA worked on that project with Sacman as well. So, with that in mind, we, with this project, we are trying to do something a little different. We actually have seven different elevations studies done for Sacman. But boring on what was being done for 574 Cookman, which is, you know, that whole flail of trying to create a different interest in that area, that's why we went with this plan. The... For 711, we have a basement, which we have approximately 132 parking spaces. Just for the basement, 132. And then, on the first floor, we have put in under 56 parking spaces, so a total of 188 parking spaces. Now, because in order to maximize on the parking, we had to increase the ceiling area, the 44 height, of course, you're... Hence, the reason why the second part of this presentation would be the request for variance on the height. So, that allowed us to provide 188 parking spots. The building itself has 51 units, so there's excess parking in that building. So, on the first floor, we have retail, which we have retail space, the plan is there. Also, we have an exercise room as well as parking on the first floor. Second, third, and fourth floor will be one bedroom and seven studio units, for a total of 17 units. So, for in the building, in the whole building, we have 51 units there, in the whole building. Again, we have 188 parking spots, 51 units. So, yes, you know, effort was great to create a lot of parking spaces.
The park requirement for the 711 Madison Building would be 87 parking spaces, so we'd have over 100 additional parking spaces. So, we'd be able to deal with parking on the other building, the 574 Cookman Building. Also, we'll be coming back, we'll touch upon a little bit tonight, the property across the street, which Council is certainly aware of, it's a Savoy building, Hill Kimbuth Building. We're going to be coming back in for a plan amendment relative to that property, which also was approved as micro units. However, we're going to come back in for a plan amendment for a luxury hotel. We want to do a boutique hotel there, which we think would fit within the downtown. The downtown does not allow hotels under CBD plans, so we're looking to get a hotel in there, a luxury hotel. We would need parking for that hotel, again, that's the reason we're doing... We need the height here. If we go an additional five feet on this building at 711, up to 50 feet, then we can get in the 188 parking spaces. It's only allowed 45 feet at this place, so only ask for an additional five feet. Keep it in mind, in terms of parking, we also have that 607 property that we're looking to get a plan amendment on, so we can do that five-level parking deck, over 500 plus six hundred parking spaces. So, we're trying to work all the obvious insignificant amount of parking in with these proposals, but in order to do it, we need certain height additions to get the additional parking in there, and also to be able to have fun.
What's the height here right now again? I'm sorry. What's the zone height there now?
45.
45, and what are you asking for?
And by raise and I still want to get, be able to get that, additional parking in that building.
And none of those are at 45 feet now, though, right, essentially?
They're all staggered, it's all different. When you look across the street, the Kimbuth Building, there's the Savoy Theater, that's that... Well, there was a plan amendment years ago that I think raised it to 70, but initially under the original CBD line was 45.
Okay, the Savoy Building.
That's right. But with the project we had before with the micro units, we've got a plan amendment going to 70.
So, when you get a plan amendment... Well, I digress.
Yeah, the plan amendments are for that particular site. You know, under the way things are done here, it's not done by variance, and if you have a redevelopment plan, it's not by...
Okay.
What I want to do also is touch upon there, this Savoy Building, just to give you an idea of what we're looking for, the plan amendments that would require for that building. Now, as Council, Mayor Councils are aware, we have a historic Kimbuth Building within the downtown that houses the Savoy Theater in there, the building. The Savoy Theater, I think, has been vacant itself for about 40 years, like through different reasons over the years. That theater, the interior space is going to be restored, that's part of the plan for this project. We were approved for micro units, I believe, 48, 48 micro units before the plan, were previously... Things started to slow down because of litigation that had occurred with the case of property that has been settled. We're able now to continue to develop the property, but in the interim, the idea came up about doing a hotel there. Obviously, when you look at what's been going on by the water, there's a significant demand for hotel space within Esberry Park. You don't have anything in the downtown. And I think it warrants that the downtown have their own hotel, have event space within the hotel that can be utilized, bring people in, particularly in the off-season, so be able to occupy the building. We have a plan, if you hear that, what we talked about, but what it does is provide for a hotel, luxury hotel in the downtown, a boutique hotel that I think would be commensurate with a lot of boutique hotels that you see around the country, the operators that would discuss this project.
So, basically, the 711 building that I've just presented is across from... So, the idea is to try to maintain the look of it put in and then, you know, more on top of it, as you mentioned. So, you know, we believe that, you know, the synergy between 711 and Savoy, and that whole street, it's also 700 Banks being completed, that this whole... That whole area warrants something of this nature, in terms of the architecture, the use of the building, as well as the... The plan also is that, since we have excess parking at 711, that will service the hotel as well. This is right across. The parking at 711 would be attended, would be attended and parking, so you'd be able to use that as well.
As you can see, the facade of the building is maintained in its historical view. On the western portion of the building, we have to go, well, we're going to go up, that's our plan, additional 20 feet. There's a reason for that. In order to do this hotel, we need 100 rooms. And the reason we need 100 rooms is that we need a local license, obviously, to get an operator to support the hotel, support the restaurants, support the... Here, that's the event space. So, that's the minimum that we need is 100 rooms. So, the additional height allows us to do, but not only that, additionally, by going up the additional space, we can do the rooftop rule, we can do event space up on the roof, so it adds additional elements. up on the roof, so it adds additional elements to this project to really create that boutique luxury hotel in the downtown of Asbury. Keep it in mind, by doing a hotel, as opposed to doing the microunits, we're also talking about a significant amount of jobs.
Did you see that rooftop pool?
Yes, rooftop pool. But we would be employing probably a hundred people, over a hundred people, by doing this type of use, as opposed to doing the microunit, where people that live there, obviously, you'd have superintendent, who maintains the building, but nothing like the permanent jobs that this type of use would create. So we'll come back with the hotel for a separate plan amendment, but I just wanted the mayor council to get a flavor of how all this fits in all the different pieces together, with regards to that.
I'm not an architect, obviously, or a planner by any stretch, and so, but, so this question is probably a little bit more to you. So I see the, visually, how those, how you added height in a way that still respected the architecture of the Savoy. And so, that I get. On the first one, it's, and this is the second time it's in front of me where it feels like this, you take like an architecturally very downtrodden building, no stretch, but in the fir, in the very first slide, an architecturally super off-the-charts sharp building, and then you put on something so modern, so modern to that, that it, to me, takes away the feel of the super, to me, strong architecture that already exists there. Like this one, I think you really meshed it well. And the second one, you're building, you're a bit starting from scratch there, so, so that's a different, that's a different monster. But the first one, it's, and this is the second time that you've brought me these structures where you take, and I'm sure there's a planning reason, and I am not a planner, where you take a historic building, and then you go super modern, and then it just feels like it doesn't match to me. But that said, I mean, that's just my opinion, and it doesn't, doesn't mean anything.
Anybody else?
I agree, I agree with Amy. It kind of looks like something was plopped on, exactly like along with that. But again, I'm not a planner, nor an architect.
Anything else? Okay, thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Next presentation is by the Director of Planning and Redevelopment, Michelle Alonso, regarding a presentation of parking fencing and landscaping in the public right-of-way four oh six Deal Drive residential parking lot.
Two's up.
Yeah.
Yep.
Okay, you ready?
Yep.
Okay, good evening, council and members of the public. Tonight, we, we had a request by the owner of four oh six Deal Lake Drive to, um, to place two parking spaces in what is considered the public right-of-way. The owner wants to expand the spaces in his parking lot. He's able to do so by, uh, by taking down some small structures on the site and re-eliminating what is a green space at the beginning of the parking lot. So the, he received approval from the planning board to expand the parking lot, adding seven spaces for a total of thirty, but two of the spaces are in the public right-of-way. Um, current, myself and the transportation planner, Mr. Manzella, currently do not recommend, without further study and consideration, the two spaces in the public right-of-way. We are asking that the owner provide a, what's known as a turning template for vehicles, because these spaces are so, this curb cut is narrow, the spaces are so close to the sidewalk, that that's something we'd like to see. But also, um, there's also, there's currently a fence in the public right-of-way that doesn't have previous approvals, and that the, it's, it's, um, the fence would stay, furthering obstructing the sideline, we believe, but we would like to see a little, a little bit more. And the landscaping buffer, from what I could tell from the drawing, is under three feet. And they're supposed to have, parking lots are supposed to have a ten-foot landscape buffer. The planning board did grant a waiver from that requirement, but two feet is pretty tight for plant material. So this is before you, because the, the owner has requested it, even though we, the planning department feels it needs further study.
This is the one you gave us the memo?
Yes.
Right? Can I ask you a quick question about the math on this one with the, and, and I'm sure I'm, I'm not reading it right, but the second sentence is, he, uh, received approval from the planning board to expand the lot to add seven parking spaces to ex, to the existing thirteen-space lot, resulting in thirty spaces.
Yeah, I'm sorry, that's a typo on my part.
Okay, just checking, just checking.
Sorry, because I'm...
It's all right. It's no big deal.
No, so it's, it's twenty.
Okay. So I have to read it?
I'm sorry.
That's okay, don't worry. I'm just saying, I didn't get to like read it, read it. I got to read it and think about it.
Right. But at this time, again...
At this time, I'll defer to them talking to you.
Right, that we would like to see some turning radius studies before we, we come up with a, a final recommendation.
Michelle, is this entrance to this parking lot on Deal Lake Drive?
No.
Okay.
No, the, I...
On park.
It, yes.
Okay.
And I did provide, um, the Google image.
Right.
And the drawing that was submitted to, to us. And is, are there any more questions?
No.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
This time, we're at the review of agenda items for March twenty eighth.
If I can address that for one second. Obviously, turn your record, both, to turn your ears, I ask. No problem with that. The fence is existing, the land recently bought, what property that's running here, and the fence is existing, but I'll provide the other gentleman's application.
Okay.
Work together with the...
You're on.
Resolution twenty eighteen dash one twenty-five is a special event application. Resolution twenty eighteen dash one twenty-six is a refund to a subsequent payment made on a, on one oh, one thousand and six bond and seventeen hundred web. Someone had a lien on this, and someone tried to pay, someone accidentally paid a subsequent, so this is just correcting a, a billing error. Resolution twenty eighteen one, one twenty-seven is accepting hazardous discharge site remediation grant, HDSR, HDSRF for the firehouse. The EDA is sending us the, the final paperwork allegedly this week, so we can accept the grant and start moving with a remedial investigation at the firehouse. Resolution twenty eighteen one thirty-nine was added today, at through, at my request. It's approving, approving the continuation of a bid threshold, of the bid threshold with the appointment of a qualified purchasing agent. Right now, I'm serving as the temporary purchasing agent. My tenure ends March thirty-first. I'm allowed to serve for two years in a temporary role. We have hired a purchasing agent who is a certified QPA, and we like to continue the existing bid thresholds. Any questions on the consent agenda?
Hold on a second. I'm lost between new and old. Did we get to the ones that you're gonna?
No.
Okay. But one thirty-nine is a consent, and one thirty-seven, one thirty-eight, all right.
Because it was add-on to today.
Okay, okay, that's where I was confused. Okay, thank you.
Individual resolutions. One twenty-eight is payment of bills. Resolution twenty eighteen dash one twenty-nine is appointing an alternate, alternate city prosecutor for twenty eighteen. We have a conflict where our existing prosecutor can't serve, Mr. Afedo's firm can't serve in the role of city attorney under the rules of the court, so we needed to appoint someone for a city-related matter. So this is probably just a one-time deal. He's been, he served before in an acting position. No complaints, so we're recommending this appointment. Resolution twenty eighteen dash one thirty is the extension of the approvals for the food truck. This is a three-year extension to finish the six-year term. Resolution twenty eighteen dash one thirty-one is an extension of the transport of liquid sudge through May of next year. This is the last extension. Last year was an extension, and the pricing was phenomenal. It was about half of what most people had been when they'd gone out to bid. When the city bid this out three or four years ago, it had additional years. The company is still interested. Rudy at the sewer plant says they're phenomenal, they're very responsive. We got a good rate, and we have to go back out to bid next year. Resolution one thirty-two is authorizing T and M to prepare initial design and permitting for the proposed lifeguard station. Right now, where we are is, we don't have a major concept. We have an idea of what a lifeguard station could look like. This will allow T and M to do survey work and speak to CAPRA to see if it's permitted. This will be paid out of the beach utility. We've been putting money aside for this design. Resolution one thirty-three is the purchase of personal protection gear for the fire department through capital. This continues the five-year installation plan of, of the personal protection gear. Off, resolution one thirty-four is also a capital purchase. It's the purchase of an ambulance for the fire department through the Houston Galvestine Cooperative, which we are a member of. Resolution one thirty-five is the purchase of radio equipment for the fire SUV. This is also capital. As you'll remember, at the last meeting, the council authorized the purchase of a fire SUV, due to the fact that the price was going to go up a thousand dollars if we didn't get the purchase order in the next day. We were still working on the quote when that was authorized. Off, uh, resolution one thirty-six is to permit BRS to conduct soil, soil, soil borings in vertical profiles on the right-of-way on eight oh one Main Street as part of the EPA grant. This is part of the remedial investigation. One thirty-seven and one thirty-eight, we are requesting to be tabled. Introduction of ordinances, we are requesting that you table twenty eighteen fifteen, which is the amendment to the waterfront redevelopment plan, and twenty eighteen dash twenty, uh, I'm sorry, twenty...
Yeah.
Yes, I'm sorry, twenty eighteen dash twenty, which is a special assessment ordinance, as they haven't been completed at this time. Moving on to the second reading. Twenty eighteen dash ten and eleven are establishing certain salaries for three positions within the city. Twenty eighteen dash twelve, which is licensing of towing, changes the inspection date. And then twenty eighteen dash thirteen is a second reading for Deal Lake Drive, in which the city received a six hundred thousand dollar grant to be paid for.
That was the towing and storage fees.
Is it fees? Oh, I'm sorry.
To just clarify the fees. We did the other one already.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
And that's all. Is there any questions?
The twenty eighteen dash sixteen, the lease agreement for the fire equipment?
Yes.
Do we have a, a length of time that we're going to be leasing that space?
Uh, right now, the draft lease is one year.
One year.
Mike, can you explain twenty, twenty eighteen dash eleven? You don't have to call out any names or anything like that, I'm just curious about it. Second reading, I'll begin.
Uh, that is to create the purchasing position and an assistant CFO position.
Twenty eighteen dash eighteen, the parking. So it looks like on Bangs Avenue, between Main Street Memorial?
Bangs is removed. That was amended and has been removed.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Twenty eighteen dash thirteen, this is on Deal Lake Drive, starting at what location?
That's being pulled.
That's being pulled?
Yes. Tabled, I'm sorry.
Thirteen?
No.
Thirteenth Deal Lake Drive. It's parked to the end.
Oh, I apologize, I'm sorry.
Park to Lock Arbor border.
I thought it was twenty.
So it's not being pulled?
No, that one's being pulled.
That's the one we got the state funding for.
I apologize.
It's starting at Park Avenue?
Going down.
And, and going east?
Going east.
I don't know which way east is, but yes.
Going east to the Lock Arbor border.
Twenty eighteen dash twenty?
We're pulling that one.
That one's pulled.
Oh, thank gosh, I had no understanding of that.
We're asking you to table it.
Okay.
Yeah.
Any other questions?
Uh, we don't, so, nope.
Next.
Matters by city council.
Um, I just want to remind everyone that the Easter pageant is this Sunday at one o'clock on the boardwalk. That's it.
Nothing, Becky.
I have no comments at this time.
Other than, why do you have that shirt on?
Good question. Why am I wearing a cowboy shirt? Because April nineteenth, Thursday, is the rodeo for recreation. There's literature on the table. It's a great fundraiser to make sure every child in Asbury Park can attend our fabulous recreation program during the summer run, together with the Board of Education, where in the morning time, kids go to school, and afternoon time, it's all recreation, and it is, to me, the best recreation program in Monmouth, Ocean County, maybe the state. So anybody looking to donate, please donate. A hundred percent after cost goes right to the Recreation Trust Fund, and it's spent totally on children. We do this every other year, because the first year, we were lucky enough to raise enough to make it go two years. So again, if everybody wants to pick up on all the way out and make a donation, deeply appreciated. So, thank you.
Yeah, the first year also, just, John's being modest, but the first year put over two hundred kids over two years through the recreation program.
Hmm, it was very successful, because the town and a lot of people outside of the town gave back, which is deeply appreciative. I'd like to say the same thing. I wish everybody a happy Easter and a safe Passover, and everybody have a good holiday, and that's all I have.
Matters by the city manager, you have two items under beach regulations.
Uh, yes. We still need to know something about smoking, as I've had some discussions with all of you. It still seems to be scattered on a uniform idea of what it could pertain to. So the drop dead to do something would be the May meeting. The April, the second meeting in April, because we still need to advertise the ordinance. Also, we just want to make you aware that if you've seen the news at the end of last year, especially in Belmar, they had regulations involving tents, that there was major tent structures. We have reviewed our city ordinance, myself and the city attorney talked today, along with the beach manager, that we do have provisions in the ordinance that we can pass a resolution, that if this does become a problem, that we'll be prepared to handle it. So the only thing we really need is an idea on smoking.
So you're looking for guidance from us?
Yeah.
So why doesn't everybody, within the next couple of weeks, get in touch, think about it, get in touch with the city managers, say what, how they feel, and then they'll give them guidance how to draw up the resolution?
I think there's no question that we're going to ban smoking through the majority of the, of the beach. I think the question is just, do we, do we go from completely banning it on the entire beach, or allowing one area to have smoking at it?
Right.
Michael, when you say that we, if there's a problem with tents, that it is in the ordinance, but if, if we find a problem with tents, and we need to enact something or act on it, how long would that take? Do we have to go through any steps?
Uh, the city code says the city council can authorize via a resolution a... Uh, the city code says the city council can authorize via a resolution any measures.
So we have to go...
At the next council meeting.
So council meeting?
Yeah.
Okay.
So no longer than 10 days.
So why don't we do that at the same time? So we're gonna do that preseason?
No, if it happens. Cause last year...
Why wait for it to happen and then have to wait another 10 days and somebody gets their eyes?
Cause we don't know what the issue could be.
Don't know what?
We don't know what issues may pop up, because Belmar's issue was more that it was blocking the view of a lot. And then here, it seemed that more of the tents were towards the back of the beach, which isn't a problem because it's not blocking the ocean. So if we keep them towards the back, then it's not an issue. But we just wanna be ready that we have something in place because we, it might happen.
Who keeps them toward the back?
The people did.
Okay, so they kind of self...
Yeah, they're self-managing it right now.
Okay, alright.
So, and the major key to that is with everything, although I feel like, God, we're putting a lot of regulations. Next it'll be music. But, is enforcement, right? So we're going, we have the enforcement power for the smokers and the tents?
Yes.
To, okay?
Yes, there's introduction to change, to make better the existing beach regulations that allow. The way it's written now is that there's only one entity under dog licensing. If you read it, the string of sense that the police and the lifeguards can enforce dogs. But the way we were proposing into introduction tonight, it actually covers the whole beach. It wasn't as clear, so we're making it much more clear.
Anything else?
Matters by the city attorney?
I have nothing at this time.
Okay, at this time, we'll break until, for four minutes.
We have four minutes.
Until seven o'clock.
Good evening, I'm gonna call the boarder to regular council meeting at the City of Asbury Park.
Okay.
Councilmember Chapman, here. Councilmember Clayton, here. Councilmember Kendall?
Present.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Here.
Please rise for a silent prayer, moment of reflection, please.
Yeah.
Flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
As to comply with the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231 Public Law 1975, adequate notice of this meeting has been provided in the following manner. The annual notice was forwarded to the Asbury Park address, the Coaster and the Star Ledger on January 4, 2018, and posted on the bulletin board the same date. All notices are on file with the city clerk. Move on to participation, can I have a motion to open the meeting to the public, please?
Move it.
Second.
Each member of the public who wishes to speak, please come up to the mics, take your name and address for the record, and each member of the public has three minutes to speak.
Seeing none.
Hello, Mayor and Council, Jerry Scramble, Long Branch. Tonight was very interesting seeing the new buildings that are going up. What I wanted to bring up was the building on Cookman Avenue in the 500 block. Donald Trump was told everybody he was gonna save some of the architecture from the Bondwood Tower building when he built Trump Tower, and somehow, a lot of that stuff got destroyed. You have to make sure that when they renovate that building, that they protect the facade and all bets are off that the facade gets destroyed, because who knows how fragile that facade's gonna become once they start renovating the building. So you need something to make sure that facade doesn't get destroyed. I mean, I don't know exactly what they're gonna do to preserve it or protect it, but once it starts falling apart, they may say they have to knock it all down, and then you're gonna get an ugly modern building. But Amy brought up a good point. That was the worst combination I ever saw in architecture, with the top of that building with the old thing. They need to incorporate it better. Maybe they should copy some of the ideas from the Seville, I mean, Seville and the buildings on the oceanfront. But you could do better architecture with the arches, because you're gonna have an antique chair with modern furniture, no one does that. You know, it's, the building, you were right to catch that, Amy, it's hard on the eye. The other building on Lake Avenue, that was interesting that they were doing different facades. But I really think you should do fake Victorian, because we face Ocean Grove and you want it to look pleasant for the eye when you're going down the street, that they're the max, because you have the beer garden that looked like an old factory, that looked cool. I think a modern building will be too tough of a contrast. So would you at least talk to some of the people on the board about that? Then the other thing is, all I heard him say, "We need 100 rooms to make the hotel work." Well, good, you need 100 rooms, then we need some free public space. That could be a second senior center, maybe it could be an office for the Chamber of Commerce or a welcome center, or storage for the historical society. We need something free if you're gonna need 100 rooms. And that's what you have to say, because you have the chance to tell you what we want. Then the other thing is, I ask every few meetings, what are the goals that were accomplished last year? I have seen none in writing. And what are the goals in writing this year? It holds you accountable, it holds the city manager accountable, and it holds the department heads accountable. No one's being held accountable. Is everybody even using the time clocks anymore, or did that get put away too? And by that, I want to say thanks to Michelle. I called her up and she got back to me right away, I appreciate that. So, like, half the time, I can't reach anybody when I call, it's easier to come down to City Hall, but Michelle called back right away, so, thank you. So, can I get an answer about the goals?
About the what?
The goals. The last year's goals, they're not in writing, that were accomplished, and what are the goals this year?
I've been tardy on my State of the City address, so that's being worked on.
I'm still writing.
So it'll be in print?
Oh yeah, of course.
Okay.
Like last year.
And you guys kinda understand what I was saying about the building? Oh, with the hotel? They need 100 rooms?
It's, okay, but they haven't come before us for anything.
No, but when they do, we need maybe 50% of the employees live in the city.
You made it very clear, as far as the time clocks, yes, they're being used.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you, General.
And then the one other thing I want to say, and Jerry, you can sit for this, is that you know we're not voting on any of these buildings tonight, right? It's a, for lack of a better word, taking the temperature on what we think, as opposed to...
They're conceptual ideas.
Okay, I understand.
Okay.
Well, I only say that because you said, Jerry, a lot of new buildings going up, so these buildings aren't going up yet, they're just...
So they're testing the water, but you can retrade now before they think they have the upper hand.
Rita Moreno, 8th Avenue. I'd like to know, we have, tonight you're gonna authorize to hire a purchasing agent, a new one? And what's an accountant payable? What does he do? We never had him before. I mean, I'd like to know what the CFO does, too. You have all these people doing little jobs. I mean, $110,000 for a salary?
I told you.
I don't know about that. I don't think we've grown that much, where you pay $110,000 to two people. I mean, you should pay attention to these things. You have given so much money you're spending tonight. Three bond issues? Three of them? A new ambulance? Which I rode in one two years ago. We gotta get another one? I'd like to know about that. And a radio for the, for the fire SUV? And also, the fire for the SUV? There's so many things on here that you're spending so much money. And also, I'd like to know why the budget went up $2 million. It went from $45 million to $47 something. I'd like to know that answer. And you know what? Look around you, all these other towns, Ocean Township, $21 million is their budget. Is it bigger than Asbury? I think so. I mean, like, what are we doing with all this money we're spending? And the other thing, there's amendments in here for the redevelopment plan. They always seem to be for the rede developer. They're never like for the person that's asking for something, like what happened at the zoning meeting the other night. He wants to build a hotel. Why can't he? I mean, what's the reason? Because he's in the redevelopment area? You can't amend that? You're amending everything else for the developer. I mean, these people have been here a lifetime, they deserve consideration. I don't know, I just don't get it. What happens here between the zoning board and the planning board? Maybe they should get out on the street more often and see what the city needs. I'm not too happy with the zoning board, I'll tell you that. And that's about it. I want to know why we're hiring all these, well, I know we need a purchasing agent, but, I mean, you have so many people in that department now. And $110,000? I mean, most, the police department are making over $100,000. You know, if you're in the Marine Corps, you don't even make $50,000, and they're fighting a war. So, why is it $110,000?
Rita?
It goes from 22 to 110.
There has to be a salary range, so that's the minimum and the maximum.
Well, which is it? What are they getting?
I don't know, because they haven't been hired yet.
I'm here long enough to know they get the max.
Okay, Rita, okay, you're cut off as far as speaking. We're gonna answer your questions.
Okay.
And I forgot half of them, because why do we need a new ambulance? Because the old ones are getting older, the ambulances are going 24/7. You know, we have a lot of ambulance calls in this town. As far as your...
I mean, your people are high to streamline government.
No, 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 you're done, it's our time. As far as your, like, synopsis, as far as bonding, you're totally wrong. As far as, like, you failed to, and you wouldn't do it last meeting, and you won't do it this meeting, I'm not even gonna ask you. You failed, you know, you wanna criticize and you wanna, like, hit us over the head, which I have no problem with, I've known you for so long, I'm used to it. But you failed to recognize there'll be a tax decrease this year, and you won't admit that. So I don't know why, and I don't, that's between you, I don't care. What happened to the zoning board, don't have a clue, not gonna get involved, go to the zoning board.
Not only a tax decrease, but we finally got off transitional aid after over a decade being on it.
We got the highest Moody's rating in 20-some years, you know, which reduces our bonding rate. So as much as you're saying we're not doing anything, I think we're making a lot of progress. And I think, as far as you saying we have too much staff and finance, I think you're totally wrong. We don't have enough staff, and that's why we're adding a position. Somebody left and we're adding a position that'll take purchasing. Right now, the city manager's doing purchasing. Do you want him, like, running the city and running these projects, or every project, be it, well, the east side, west side, north side, south side? Or do you want him to go through, like, 20 reviews to see, like, did this company submit all their paperwork for a tractor and a truck? That's a waste of his time, and do we need to purchase an agent? Yes, and that's why it's being hired. As far as the rest of your questions, I honestly forgot most of them. Michael, if you want to add anything?
Uh, there was a question on the $2 million in the budget increase. Approximately $700,000 salary in wages, and then the other expenses is 1.3 million. But as has been stated, there actually is no tax increase this year, and the average house is going down. The increase of revenues was miscellaneous revenues, in which the fire department from the ambulance brought in $700,000 in revenue from calls, and using more of our fund balance because we've been able to regenerate additional revenue outside of what was anticipated. So the average house, as we stated, is gonna see a tax decrease of $46.
So we're trying, Rita, I know what you're saying, and, but, I think sometimes you see things this way, we see this way, and, but...
I know.
What you're saying, we're trying.
Wait a minute, the rate went down. The taxes didn't go down. You said, remember that little quote you did last week?
The amount to be raised by...
You said that an average house that's $297,000 is gonna only be paying $46. That's what you said.
Will be paying less than $46.
Yeah, but whose house is worth $297,000?
Okay, Rita, your time's up, Rita, so we're not gonna have a cross-conversation. We tried to answer all of your questions. If you want to follow up, you can call me and you call the city manager, and I'll talk to you. Motion to close public?
No, no.
Well, then...
Sean Daniel, Manor Drive, Neptune, New Jersey. I'm here again, being persistent to request the city council to move on the receivership for the West Side Community Center. And I'm requesting you to make it a priority, because there is no leadership there. We have, as you know, been working diligently for over four months now, and we have a plan in place, we have fundraising in place, we have over 10 people who are committed, people who are qualified to run a sufficient nonprofit organization, and are committed to getting the 501(c)(3) status. So now I understand that there's some time you're taking, 40 days, to make sure that they're not going to appeal, or to see if they're going to appeal. But the bottom line is that there's no leadership there. And why wait? After 10 years of having a dysfunctional leadership in place, why give them another two months, 40 days, five months? It just doesn't make sense now. You know, our kids are at stake, our community is at stake. And so, you know, we request that you move on this. And could you please tell me if there's another reason why you haven't? Please let me know.
Okay, if, you're done?
Yes.
No, it's the same answer for the last two meetings. You're right, on February 27th, the judge rendered a decision, and by law, they have 45 days to appeal. We cannot change the law, and we're not gonna get in the middle of a lawsuit of doing something until that appeal time has expired. So that appeal time, I believe, is April 13th. So if you come to the April 11th meeting and ask the same question, I'm gonna give you the same answer. Until that is done, the legal rights guaranteed by the court has expired, we will not take any action. Is it on the back of our burner? Absolutely, when that happens. But until then, legally and morally, we're not going to.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Felicia Simmons.
Hello, Felicia.
Hello. 1034 Sewell Avenue, Asbury Park. Again, I'm here also with the committee, and I just heard your answer. But in that answer, as we wait another few weeks, as you wait another few weeks, there's more and more decay happening to the city, and to the center, and to the center also, center also. We stand here, because we stand for kids and community. I've seen and I've watched the city change over my lifetime. I've specifically seen the fast paces changed in the last five years. Knowing a little bit of the history and the financing and the structure that's happening, millions of dollars have coming up to make plans for the city. I just calculated in my mind, having a previous conversation before I came here. Millions of dollars into plans for the city, right? Plans on how to deal with the West Side, how to help the West Side buy into this renaissance that's happening here in the city for most, but not for us. Millions of dollars in plans, and all we're asking for is not a dime, but your action to make sure that these plans that in the past have sat on desks and in backs of offices and on shelves collecting dust, these plans that you ask us to come and participate in, and when we do come and participate in, and we say, "Give us another chance, we have hope in this plan," right? All these plans and these extra consultants and all these things to come up with something to help us. We're saying, we're here to help ourselves, but in this case, we need your help, your elected officials, to help us with these plans to make sure that we have a future here in the city. Now again, I'm not gonna ask for a response, because you gave your response, but in that time that you're sitting there waiting, knowing that it is an option for you to take action, it is an option, and you've given benefits of the doubt for past administrations over at the West Side. We're just saying, take some action. And as soon as the 13th hit, let your decisions come on the 14th. Let by the next meeting, you have something to do for us over at the West Side. Now, again, I'm not going to ask for a response, because you gave your response. But in that time that you're sitting there waiting, knowing that it is an option for you to take action. It is an option. And you've given benefits of the doubt for past administrations over at the West Side. We're just saying, take some action. And as soon as the 13th hit, let your decisions come on the 14th. Let by the next meeting, you have something to do for us over at the West Side, which, again, we've got plans. We haven't received any action. So thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Council. Kim Polenz, West Side, New Jersey. We met with you, two of your members, about, well, three months ago. Ms. Chapman and Mr. Moore, and with the city manager. At that time, we expressed our, what our program was and our intent to do what we could to save the center. And we, you know who we are. Many of us have, history goes back to the center to the time we were children. Several of us were board presidents on the board, whatever, you know? So we've got an intimate relationship with the center in the past. Seventy-five-year-old agency. It's been very instrumental in terms of doing much to help children in Asbury Park. In fact, you had a Black History Month program, I understand, a couple of weeks ago. And Helen Elliott was the keynote speaker. And of course, anyone who's been around Asbury Park for a while knows Helen has a relationship with the city of Asbury Park. She used to work for the city. She retired from Brookdale. And she's a dynamic person. I understand she made a statement that, as part of her speech, that there were three things she did when she was a child. She was allowed to go to school, to church, and the West Side Community Center. Now, the question is this right here. When we met with you guys several months ago, we didn't get a commitment then. And we still haven't gotten a commitment now in terms of whether or not the mayor and council has a disposition towards pursuing a receivership or not. I know you guys pursue the tax action. I'm not sure if you guys had an end plan or not, other than the possibly foreclosing the property. We came forward with a legal option for the city to pursue. In fact, it's the only viable legal option to pursue, and that's a receivership. And yet, we have not yet received any commitment whatsoever from mayor and council, any indication whatsoever as to whether or not you support what it is we're trying to do, that the city should be trying to do with us. Now, we just lost a child on Ridge Avenue. Actually, we lost three people. We lost a child, we lost the two individuals involved in that shooting. Three lives lost. And those aren't the only lives lost. So the question is whether or not mayor and council has a commitment to doing something to help these children out. Mr. Kendall knows the West Side Community Center. We have a Facebook page up now. We happened to find a picture with him in it. He had a chair, he was on the championship basketball team with Donald Hamery as your coach. I don't know if you got to see that picture. But you know the center. You know its history. Yeah, you know its history. You know its programs. And I was a board president for 15 years. I came on in the early 80s, and we turned the center around. We even expanded the center's operations and purchased the property on Bangs Avenue. And we named it the Rainbow Learning Center. And we opened it up to provide daycare services for unwed mothers. We did so many different programs. The center's going down now. It has no 501(c)(3) status. It is not in the New Jersey Charities Registry. It is dysfunctional. The question is, what is the mayor and council going to do? And there is no legal or moral impediment, let me just say, there's no legal or moral impediment, to your proceeding at this juncture. Mr. Fetter can tell you. The 45-day appeal period has nothing to do with the city's right to proceed as a creditor under the receivership statutes whatsoever. If you lost the appeal, if you lost the appeal, you might lose credit six. All right, well, my question is, are you going to make a commitment or not?
When the time is appropriate, yes.
That means you're going to, you'll be willing to proceed?
We're going to, no. When the time is, we've made the commitment to the entire town through not this effort, through every effort you probably weren't here when we said, "Please donate to the Recreation for Rodeo." So I mean, we've made a commitment to everybody in this town to do the best for everybody. So when the time of it has expired, we will take action. We're not going to put out there, it's like, hey, I'm going to rob a bank, Mr. Police Officer. I'm going to tell you what bank I'm going to rob at what time. I mean, we're not going to put our cards on the table until we have to. And that's when the 45 days has expired.
All right, well, veiling yourself a receiver is not the equivalent of going to rob a bank. That's all I'm saying.
And it's also not the only option, right? The receivership's not the only option.
Are there other options?
There's other options we're talking about.
There are no other options, other than foreclosing that property that you had. There are no other options, because right now that...
Kim, you're done.
Okay.
Thank you. I'm robbing a bank tomorrow. I'm going to share it with you. We're going to tell the West, we're going to say in public, "West Side Community Center, here's what we're thinking about doing so they can prepare to stop that." No, we're not going to share our options.
Well, they can prepare something, other than follow my answer to your plan.
Okay. Next.
My name is Larry Walker. I am also a part of the committee to save the West Side Community Center. I've been in Asbury Park since 1959, October. And I've seen this town, oh, my God, do a 360. And I've been on both sides of the law. And I'm 50, I'm 67 years old now. And I want to dedicate the rest of my life trying to give back to this community and doing something for Asbury Park and these children. I have two great-grandchildren that I don't want to see ducking bullets in Asbury Park. This committee is dedicated. I went to their meetings just to find out what was going on in Asbury Park. I went to a lot of meetings around Asbury Park and listened to what people were saying and what was going on, because I wasn't here for a while. So when I found out what was going on, this group that want to do something for those kids out there that are running around right now, they're going to have the whole summer to be involved in whatever illegal activity they want to be involved in. And they don't have a place to go like the community center. That community center over there, we used to have dancers in there. We used to have a dance contest, singing contest. We used to have parties, picnic, mystery rides to parks, swimming. It's just every, I mean, this is what those kids need, instead of running around with bags of drugs and guns. We can go down those streets and talk to those kids as a community center and get some feedback and talk to their parents. I don't think that you're doing a bad job for the rebuilding Asbury Park. I think Asbury Park is growing like crazy. But there's a thorn here on the West Side community. And we are present, available, and willing to volunteer our time to go over there, talk to these kids. We have people in line right now to counsel grieving parents from gunshot, from their kids being killed. We have counseling set up for alcoholism, drug use, showing people how to fill out job applications. The parole reentry program already have list of jobs on their table. And I saw, I saw a few people take a few of those jobs and get hired, coming right out of prison. It's a good program if we can take those same applications, which they agreed to give me. I pass them out to churches and everywhere around here to try to help these kids. We are willing, and we are here and available. Can you please help us do this? Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Motion to close.
Second.
Good evening. Ernest Nagoli, 400 Deal Lake Drive, Asbury Park, New Jersey. I'm arriving back from the city. I'm a little bit late. But I find it interesting, the allowance of certain people to go overtime, to make accusations about people that aren't here. That's probably why I don't come and a lot of other people don't come here, because this is the forum that we have. I want to make some brief statements. I'm blocked from communicating with police, fire, the city, everyone on the council. I have never emailed anyone personally, only City of Asbury Park emails. Through no due process, the city manager has decided to intercept and block all my emails. He sent me an email saying he didn't. I came in and spoke with the IT person. In front of him, I sent him an email, and he says it's blocked. So this reminds me of when we had the thing with the sign on the lamppost where the city manager stated there was an application by the deputy mayor, and it went in charge of city power delay, that they have the approval, et cetera. We went to work, we offered everything, there was no doubt. Further, the city council proceeds to put out letters making accusations of people that are sending lawful and peaceful emails. Again, I have never sent an email to anyone's personal email address. I would never. I have never been to dinner with any official, anyone official in Asbury Park. For them and the legal council to make statements that I'm sending criminal emails with pictures of child endangerment, fighting, drug things, dangerous stuff, is beyond my comprehension. There's no injunction, there's no due process, there's no notice, no nothing. So it involves the city council. The last thing is the sandtander. The sandtander, I have owned and lived there since 2007, August. That building is the most dangerous building. And it's not the only thing that I own, that I think I've ever lived in. And in addition, the city oversight, which the state gives this city, because it's a local enforcement city, is absent. We're living with lead contamination, asbestos, rats, mosquitoes, falling ceilings, roof leak, water going into junction boxes, et cetera, et cetera. Now, what are we offered? A management company that used to be two city officials that operate out of a home at 1118 Fifth Avenue, calling themselves a corporation, registered with the Chamber of Commerce. And it's a house. And all our records that we need are being kept in that house.
You can finish yours. Okay, thank you. Motion to close.
Move it.
Second.
Move on to minutes. We have three sets of minutes this evening. We have executive session minutes of March 14, 2018, workshop minutes of March 14, 2018, and regular session minutes of March 14, 2018. Have a motion to approve those minutes, please?
Move it.
Second.
Any comments or questions? Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Consent agenda. Resolution 2018-125, resolution approving the special event applications. Resolution 2018-126, resolution authorizing refund due to subsequent payment erroneously made by redeemed lien block, by redeemed lien, block 2704, lot 22, 1006 Bond Street, and block 4302, lot 1.202, 1700 Webb Street, Unit 2B. Resolution 2018-127, resolution accepting receipt depositors discharge site remediation fund, HDSRF grant. And lastly, 2018-139, resolution approving the continuation of the bid threshold with appointment of a qualified purchasing agent. Would anybody like any of those resolutions removed off the consent agenda? Karen Ngannou, can I have a motion, please?
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
On to individual resolutions. Resolution 2018-128, resolution approving payment of bills. Councilmember Chapman abstains from PO 18-00239. Can I have a motion to approve the bills, please?
Move it.
Second.
Any comments or questions? Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
No.
Resolution 2018-129, resolution appointing alternate city prosecutor for 2018. Can I have a motion, please?
Move it.
Second.
Comments or questions? Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution 2018-130, authorizing extension of approvals for food truck, the food truck court. Can I have a motion, please?
Move it. Second.
Any comments or questions? Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
No.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution 2018-131, authorizing extension of transport of liquid sludge through May 27, 2019. Can I have a motion, please?
Move it.
Second.
Comments or questions? Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution 2018-132, authorizing T&amp;M to prepare preinitial design and permitting for the lifeguard station. Can I have a motion, please?
Move it.
Second.
Any comments or questions? Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
No.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution 2018-133, resolution authorizing the purchase of personnel protection gear for the fire department. Can I have a motion, please?
Move it.
Move it.
Second.
Any comments or questions? Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution 2018-134, resolution authorizing the purchase of an ambulance for the fire department. Can I have a motion, please?
Move it. Second.
Any comments or questions? Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution 2018-135, resolution authorizing the purchase of radio equipment for fire SUV. Can I have a motion, please?
Move it.
Second.
Any comments or questions? Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution 2018-136, resolution to permit BRS to conduct civil warings and vertical profiles in a public right-of-way on Main Street and Asbury Avenue as part of remedial investigation activities. Can I have a motion, please?
Move it.
Second.
Any comments or questions? Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution two thousand eighteen dash one thirty-seven is a recommendation of the administration to table this.
Motion to table.
Move it.
Second. Why, why don't you, if, no, why don't you read what we're tabling so the public-
Amendments to the Asbury Lanes Project on block forty-one oh four, lot seven, eight, and nine, two oh nine, Fourth Avenue, and recommendation and referral to the Asbury Park Planning Board.
Thank you.
Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution two thousand eighteen dash one thirty-eight, interim use of block forty-one oh five, lot one, for mobile exposition space for recommendation and referral to the Asbury Park Planning Board. This was also recommended to be tabled.
Second.
Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
On to ordinances introduction. Two thousand eighteen dash fifteen, adoption of an amendment to the waterfront redevelopment. Have a motion to table, please?
Motion to table.
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution two thousand eighteen dash sixteen, authorizing lease agreement for fire equipment storage at eight oh one Main Street. Have a motion to introduce, please?
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
No.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
No.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Public hearing is scheduled for April twenty-fifth, two thousand eighteen. Ordnance two thousand eighteen dash seventeen, ordinance amending chapter five beach and boardwalk and beachfront regulations. Have a motion to introduce, please?
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes. We're on introducing the beach truck. Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Public hearing is scheduled for April twenty-fifth, two thousand eighteen. Ordnance two thousand eighteen dash eighteen, ordinance of the City of Asbury Park amending traffic and parking regulations, chapter seven. Have a motion to introduce, please?
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
No.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Public hearing is scheduled for April twenty-fifth, two thousand eighteen. Ordnance two thousand eighteen dash nineteen, and ordinance establishing new restrictions related to prohibited parking during certain hours on Third Avenue and amending and supplementing section seven dash fourteen entitled Parking Prohibited During Certain Hours on Certain Streets, Chapter Seven, Traffic of the Code of the City of Asbury Park, New Jersey, Quarterly. Have a motion to introduce, please?
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Public hearing is scheduled for April twenty-fifth, two thousand eighteen. Ordnance two thousand eighteen dash twenty, amendments number one to the ordinance of the City of Asbury Park and County of Monmouth, New Jersey, providing for the special assessment of the cost of certain waterfront, stormwater, roadway, street state, utility, and other infrastructure improvements, portions of the prime renewal area, the boardwalk area within the Asbury Park waterfront redevelopment, and establishment of a mechanism for payment of the cost thereof. This was also recommended to table.
Motion to table.
Move it.
Have a second?
Second.
Second.
Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
If I could just indicate that all the matters that were tabled tonight deal with issues involving the waterfront. And the reason that councils tabled them is that the matters are still being reviewed and that they were not ready for formal action at tonight's meeting. They will be brought forward at a future meeting of the council.
Second reading, public hearing, ordinance two thousand eighteen dash ten, ordinance establishing salaries to certain employees within the City of Asbury Park, Monmouth County. Have a motion to open this ordinance to the public, please?
Move it.
Second.
Seeing no public, motion to close?
Move it.
Second.
Have a motion to adopt ordinance two thousand eighteen dash ten, please?
Move it. Second.
Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Ordnance two thousand eighteen dash eleven, and ordinance establishing salaries for certain employees within the City of Asbury Park, Monmouth County, New Jersey. Have a motion open to the public, please?
Move it.
Second.
Seeing no public comment, have a motion to close?
Move it.
Second.
Motion to approve, please?
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Ordnance two thousand eighteen dash twelve, and ordinance amending and supplementing chapter four general licensing, section twenty-five, licensing of towing of businesses, subsection twenty-five point ten, towing and storage fees, and changes of the Code of